In five, we'll speak to multiple candidates. They will have, when questioned, they'll have one minute to respond. In the interest of time, we do have one minute. They will be cut off after one minute. Questions have been collected from the community at large over the past several weeks. I am, again, incredibly enthused by the response we have received. This shows us that voters in Stevens County are excited too about this election. They're passionate, they are fired up, and they are concerned about our community. We have several issues that are on everyone's mind right now. Budgeting, zoning, budgeting, our local hospital. Did I mention budgeting? Lots of questions about that. I've gone through our questions and condensed what we could, making complex questions. I think you're going to be impressed with those that we have. I alone have the sets of questions. Our candidates were not provided a list of those prior to being up here in the hot seat. We're going to begin with Ms. Kay Reed. Ms. Kay serves in District One, Post One of our Board of Education. She's a Republican and is running unopposed. She'll have one minute to address.
My name is Kay Reed. I have just, I am completing my first term on the Board of Education, so this would be the beginning of my second term. I am Mary DeTerry Reed, a lifelong resident of Stevens County. I have a daughter that's a teacher, and I have two grandkids in the school system. Some of the things we've done this past year, we were provided a lot of cares money, and we use that money to uplift our schools. We had some schools that had gotten in some pretty bad shape, and we put in new air conditioners in all the elementary schools. All that money was put back into our schools and into our students. Also, one of the things that I wanted to see was that when our kids graduate from high school, that they're ready to go out into the job, into a job, and hopefully in here in Stevens County. Now, when they get into high school, they have so many different paths that they can choose, and that is another thing that I am real proud of what we've done. I've enjoyed being on the board, and I thank you for those that voted for me last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. You may have heard a bell shortly before Ms. Reed's finishing. We are going to be giving our candidates a bell when they have 10 seconds left. Then, when their time is up, they are notified via a little sign here in the front for our listeners online and via WNEG. We are live right now. I want to keep you guys updated as much as I can. Coming onto stage now is District One, Post Two. The incumbent is Republican Jim Bellamy. We'll talk with him in just one second. I find it interesting that in four different positions, we have 10 candidates for the Board of Education. This tells me lots about the current state. This tells me, again, that our children have a lot of people concerned, they have a lot of people looking out for them, and I'm excited about that. Mr. Bellamy, please.
I prefer to stand if that's okay.
That's fine, that's fine. I've let the candidates know that I'll not be repeating questions tonight, so they need to listen up, okay? Mr. Bellamy, you'll have one minute to make your introductory remarks.
Thank you. I've been a part of the Stevens County School System for the majority of my adult career. I have been a part of building this system. We have a really good school system. Is it perfect? No. Is there room for improvement? Yes. I want to be able to stay on the board so that we can build it better, make it even better, and make it possible for our kids to have a great education and one that they can turn out to be productive people in our society.
Thank you. Question number one. Are you related by birth or marriage to anyone in an elected or government position? And if so, who?
No.
Question two. What is your position concerning the critical race theory in our schools and the teaching of transgender sex to our children?
I do not believe that the critical race theory should be taught in our school system. I'm very emphatic about that. Also, the gender, God made women, women; He made men, men. Bathrooms are, male bathrooms are for males only, female bathrooms are for females only. And I want to say this, God didn't make no mistakes.
Question number three. In this fiscal year, we have paid three superintendents at one time for four months and two superintendents for at least nine months. If elected, what steps will you take to ensure we never do that again? And what part of the budget was utilized? And what services did our students and teachers go without to afford these superintendent's pay?
First of all, our students will not go without anything because of superintendent's pay. We are in the best financial shape we've been in in decades. 2014, I ran for the Board of Education. Millage rate was 20 mils, the school system was broke. To date, our millage rate, 16.51, and I am in favor of reducing it to 16. Now, superintendents, these are personnel policies, personnel issues. I would love to be able to discuss the personnel issues with you, but I am forbid to do that. I cannot do that because of policies, because of laws. We have not forfeited anything by paying our superintendents, and we will not forfeit anything for our children in order to pay superintendents, and this is going to end.
Question four. The pandemic forced many Stevens County teachers to become online educators. How are we preparing our teachers to be both successful and satisfied in their jobs in light of these new requirements?
It is my opinion that in school, students in the classroom with a qualified teacher is the best possible education we can give our students. I am not opposed to virtual learning. If the parents feel like this is what's best for them, good. But I am, I am in favor of the teaching in school with our students. I don't think that we can, they can get an adequate education because the teacher is there, the teacher is, has been able to help them and give them the assistance needed when they need it.
We have two other questions. Question five. As staff shortages deepen across the country and workload increases, more educators are feeling burned out and demoralized. Research shows that school leaders who protect teachers' time invite their input and support their mental health and well-being through comprehensive programs see higher levels of satisfaction and retention. What steps do you think are the most important in protecting and honoring our educators?
Our educators are really hard workers. They have been through a lot with COVID. Our students have been through a lot. That is our main function of our school board now, is to recoup the lost time and the lost education that our students had during the COVID, during the pandemic. Our teachers were fantastic. They worked through it, they supported our policies, and they did everything they could do to see that our kids continued to get a good education. We support them, we have supported them in every way possible. We provide learnings, more equipment and more curriculum for learning. We have provided them with opportunities to grow, and we're doing our very best at this time to see that our students are not negatively impacted.
Last question. Recent graduates of our school system and many others have openly stated that they felt underprepared for the real world due to a lack of skills preparation, specifically no training in banking such as mortgages or loans, insurance, writing checks, public speaking, mental health management, soft skills, how to apply for a loan, or how to file their taxes. As the authority that approves curriculum for this county, what would your answer to this problem be?
This is definitely a needed area, soft skills especially. When people go to, to apply for a job, when they're filling out applications, when they are, are making changes in careers, these skills need to be, and we need to spend more time, more money in our CTAE program to see that these skills are met, and we are planning on doing this in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone being here today, and thank you so much.
As Mr. Bellamy exits, he is being challenged this year by Republican Amber Gilbert. As she's coming to the stage, I'd like to bring it to audience members' attention that in the lobby, we have prepared for you just a copy of the Toccoa Records article from this past week. They have, they have interviewed each of our commissioners with a series of questions, and the results are printed in the lobby for you. If you're not a regular subscriber of the Toccoa Record, I encourage you to grab a copy of these so you can study and be greater prepared whenever you go to the polls. They will be following up this week's article next week with the same format for the Board of Education candidates, and I'll look forward to that as well. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Let's get started with question number one. Are you related? I beg your pardon. Ms. Gilbert, please, you have one minute for your introductory remarks.
My name is Amber Gilbert, and my husband and I moved to Stevens County about six years ago. We have six children who are all in Stevens County school system. I'm a stay-at-home mom, but I have a small business that I've grown for the past six years from my home. Recently, I've chosen to pause my business, and during this time, I've dedicated learning all I can about our schools and our Board of Education. I feel like it's important to have parents on the Board of Education helping make decisions regarding our schools and our children. My focus will, will be to bring an open and honest line of communication from our school board to our schools, our staff, and our parents. My commitment will be to become well-informed, question everything, be your advocate, and never be afraid to challenge the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, question number one. Are you related by birth or marriage to anyone in an elected or government position? And if so, who?
No.
Question two. What is your position concerning the critical race theory in our schools and the teaching of transgender sex to our children?
I feel like that's something parents should be doing at home, not in our school system.
In this fiscal year, we've paid three superintendents at one time for four months and two superintendents for at least nine months. If elected, what steps will you take to ensure we never do that again? And what part of the budget was utilized? And what services did our students and teachers go without to afford that?
I'll be honest, I don't know. I don't know. I've not been privy to that information as to why we were paying three superintendents. I did try to find that answer, and I was unable to do so, so I don't know. And I also don't know what our teachers sacrificed while we were paying three superintendents, but I plan to.
Question four. The pandemic forced many Stevens County teachers to become online educators. How are we preparing our teachers to be both successful and satisfied in their jobs in light of these new requirements?
I don't think we've done enough. I don't think we've done enough. I think we have failed some of our teachers through the virtual learning. We asked a whole lot of them, we're continuing to ask more and more from them. I just, I don't, I don't know, I don't think that we did prepare them. I don't think we had time to prepare them, so, yeah.
Question five. As staff shortages deepen across the country and workload increases, more educators are feeling burned out and demoralized. Research shows that school leaders who protect teachers' time invite their input and support their mental health and well-being through comprehensive programs see higher levels of satisfaction and retention. What steps do you think are the most important in protecting and honoring our educators?
I think we need to get them help. I think we need to have some sort of crisis intervention even for our teachers. I think it's important for our students, but I think that our teachers need help, and I don't think that we've given them that. Hopefully, I understood that question correctly.
Question number six, final question. Recent graduates of our school system and many others have openly stated that they have felt underprepared for the real world due to a lack of skills preparation, specifically no training in banking such as mortgages or loans, insurance, writing checks, public speaking, mental health management, soft skills, how to file, excuse me, how to apply for a loan, or how to file their own taxes. As the authority that approves curriculum for the county, what would your answer to this problem be?
I think we do need to add more hands-on learning. I think we need to learn and add in more programs that are teaching our kids for, out of like, after school, after the high school years. I think it's important to add in some of those programs that are teaching our kids how to build your credit, how to function in life without your parents. I don't, I don't know that we have enough of those currently.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. That was it.
Yep.
You survived. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Way to the stage is District Two, Post One, Republican Trip Arrowood. Thank you, Trip. You have one minute for your introductory remarks.
My name is Trip Arrowood. I'm a 2009 graduate of Stevens County where I served as class president. After high school, I attended the University of Georgia where I graduated with a degree in political science. After college, I moved away for a few years, and about a year ago, my wife and I decided it was time for us to come back home. I've always had a servant's heart. I've wanted to serve my community for as long as I could remember, and this feels like the best opportunity and the best way I can utilize my abilities is to serve my community through the Board of Education. I believe that you have to have a servant's heart, and I believe that the best way to do that is start by ensuring success for the future generations. I have a passion for education, and I have a passion for the young people of this community. I have a son that is a year and a half old, so I have a vested interest in the continuing success of our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Arrowood. Question number one. Are you related by birth or marriage to anyone in an elected or government position? And if so, who?
No.
Question two. What is your position concerning the critical race theory in our schools and the teaching of transgender sex to our children?
I believe that all students should be given the opportunity to succeed regardless of how they identify, regardless of race, regardless of sexual orientation. I believe that the school system exists to prepare them for future success, whatever that may be, after their time in Stevens County.
Question. Beg your pardon. Question three. In this fiscal year, we have paid three superintendents at one time for four months and two superintendents for at least nine months. If elected, what steps will you take to ensure we never do that again? And what part of the budget was utilized? And what services did our students and teachers go without to afford that?
I believe it's hard to nail down exactly what they were able to go without. I believe that when you pay someone in a high-ranking position like that, I believe it affects all aspects of the school system, and I believe that paying someone in that position trickles down and affects people not only K through 12, but the teachers, administrators, and faculty as well. I think the board's job going forward is to ensure the success both financially and from a stability standpoint, and that starts, for the students, and that, I believe that starts at the very top with the superintendent. So we have to take the steps necessary to ensure that we have someone that fits not only this school system, but this community as well.
Question four. The pandemic forced many Stevens County teachers to become online educators. How are we preparing our teachers to be both successful and satisfied in their roles in light of these new requirements?
I think that the pandemic threw us all for a loop. I think that there's no way you can prepare for the difficult challenges that came about through that, and I think that we as a community, and especially as a school system, have had to learn pretty much on the fly how to better equip our students for a changing world, and we've never seen anything like that like we did in 2020. But I think the board has to be able to adapt and, you know, just learn from each other and from the faculty and from the administrators and from the students as well as to how better equip them. I think we have to have an open ear for everyone involved.
Question five. As staff shortages deepen across the country and workload increases, more educators are feeling burned out and demoralized. Research shows that school leaders who protect teachers' time invite their input and support their mental health and well-being through comprehensive programs see higher levels of satisfaction and retention. What steps do you think are the most important in protecting and honoring our educators?
I believe a lot of that begins at the top. I believe at each individual school, you have to have a principal that cares for his or her faculty, and I believe that he or she has to have a finger on the pulse for what their faculty in each of their schools wants, what they need, and what their concerns may be. My wife is a mental health professional, so I like to think that I have a pretty good idea of what people need, and a lot of times, that's just an ear. People will tell you what they need, they'll be more than happy to share their heart with you, you just have to be willing to listen. So I think the board going forward has to listen to their principals, has to listen to their administrators, and encourage their administrators to encourage their teachers and faculty, and just let them know what their needs and concerns may be.
Last question for Mr. Arrowood. Recent graduates of our school system and many others have openly stated that they felt underprepared for the real world due to a lack of skills preparation, specifically no training in banking such as mortgages or loans, insurance, writing checks, public speaking, mental health management, soft skills, how to apply for a loan, or how to file their own taxes. As the authority that approves curriculum for the county, what would your answer be to this problem?
I think that this is an ongoing problem, not just in this community, but the world as well. I think we're seeing a changing world financially, health care-wise. So I think that, again, we have to be able to adapt, and I think the school board's position going forward, again, will be able to have to listen to the administrators, listen to the students, and be able to figure out what their needs are. As someone that's fairly recently removed from this particular school system, I know what it's like to be a student here. I know what it's like to grow up in this community, and I know what it's like to leave and then also come back, so I feel as though that I can give some firsthand accounts on what it takes to succeed in this world now from someone from my generation and be able to better prepare the next generation to do so as well.
Thank you, Mr. Arrowood. You're all finished. Approaching the stage now is the challenger to Mr. Arrowood, Republican Mary Day Widener. I'd like to extend a sincere, sincere thank you to the Stevens County High School JROTC who opened our evening with a presentation of colors and the Pledge of Allegiance. They are a sincerely undervalued group that we have at our disposal. These are great, great students who are working very hard, and I am overwhelmed by them every time I see them, whether it's at a football game, anywhere. Please show them some support. Ms. Widener, you have one minute for your opening remarks.
Okay, thank you. I'm a retired educator of 25 years. I'm a mother to four and a grandmother to five, three of whom are in the Stevens County school system. I have experience as a teacher and an administrator. For eight years, I was the director of the Student Support Services and managed a budget of $8 million. Since my retirement, I have volunteered my time to food to kids and as a castle, which is a court-appointed special advocate for foster children. I need to catch my breath. I have a passion for doing what is right for kids. They are totally dependent on the adults to see that they are provided for adequately. I've advocated for kids both individually and collectively my whole career. I would like to continue to do that as a member of the Board of Education. I'll strive to advocate for our students, support the teachers and staff so necessary for the educational process, and be a good steward of our resources. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Widener. You get to catch your breath while I read off these really long questions.
Okay.
Question number one. Are you related by birth or marriage to anyone in an elected or government position? And if so, who?
No.
See, that's easy. Question two. What's your position concerning the critical race theory in our schools and the teaching of transgender sex to our children?
I'm against both of them.
Question three. In this fiscal year, we've paid three superintendents at one time for four months and two superintendents for at least nine months. If elected, what steps would you take to ensure we never do that again? And what part of the budget was utilized? And what services did our students and teachers go without to afford that?
Well, I think we should fully vet the superintendents that we hire, which is, can be a very involved process. I am not sure what our students went without. I'm sure they went without something because when you pay two or three people to do one job, somebody's going to go without.
Question four. The pandemic forced many Stevens County teachers to become online educators. How are we preparing our teachers to be both successful and satisfied in their jobs in light of these new requirements?
It requires a lot of professional development, I think, and a lot of support. I think teachers, it is not a 40-hour-a-week job. It just isn't. It takes a lot more time than 40 hours a week. So if we can give them adequate planning time, I think that's very important. We tend to eat up planning time with meetings, so maybe if we could provide a couple of days a month for teachers to plan, I think that would be great. It's a time issue. It's a, it's just a time issue. So if we can provide teachers with those time, that time, I think they would be very grateful for that.
Question five. As staff shortages deepen across the country and workload increases, more educators are feeling burned out and demoralized. Research shows that school leaders who protect teachers' time invite their input and support their mental health and well-being through comprehensive programs see higher levels of satisfaction and retention. What steps do you think are the most important in protecting and honoring our educators?
Well, providing them that time, like I just said, seeing that they get their full salary. I, I worked for Stevens County, and I wasn't the only one. I mean, it was across the state, but I worked for eight or 10 years and never received my full salary. So I think it's very important that, you know, we, we try not to have furlough days or days where teachers and staff don't get paid. I think that is very discouraging. They don't feel like what they're doing is very worthwhile if they're not paid for, for what they're doing.
Last question. Recent graduates of our school system and many others have openly stated that they felt underprepared for the real world due to a lack of skills preparation, specifically no training in banking such as mortgages or loans, insurance, writing checks, public speaking, mental health management, soft skills, or how to apply for a loan or file their own taxes. As the authority that approves curriculum for the county, what would your answer be to this problem?
I think we should have some curriculum that addresses life skills for kids. I, I think it's very important. Used to, a lot of that was learned at home, but it's not, you know, it's not, and it's so more complicated now than it used to be. So I think, you know, when I first started here, we had a course for freshmen that addressed a lot of that, but because of finances, it was cut, and it was never added back. I think it's very important that we would add something back like that to our curriculum.
Okay. Thank you. You're all finished.
Woo! Thank you.
Republican for District Two, Post Two. Mr. Dobbs, you have one moment for your introductory remarks.
My name's Travis Dobbs. I am a nurse practitioner at Toccoa Clinic. I have a bachelor's degree in nursing from Brunel, and I have a master's degree from the University of North Georgia. I've been at Toccoa Clinic for about five years now. I'm also the CEO and medical director for the Center for Wellness and Recovery. My wife Amanda's a parapro at Big A. We have two children, ages eight and five. One two children, ages eight and five, one at Liberty and one at Big A. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve on the Board of Education. My family and I are very involved in the school system. I'm very committed to the success of our students. And I believe that the success of the community starts with the education of our children.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbs. Let's get going with question number one. Are you related by birth or marriage to anyone in an elected or government position? And if so, who?
I am not.
Question number two. What's your position concerning the critical race theory in our schools and the teaching of transgender sex to our children?
We have to be very careful about what we're teaching our children. They're very personal at this age. And so I, for one, am not a fan of critical race theory. I believe that should be taught at higher levels of education and not in elementary and middle school.
Question number three. In this fiscal year, we have paid three superintendents at one time for four months and two superintendents for at least nine months. If elected, what steps will you take to ensure we never do that again? And what part of the budget was utilized? And what services did our students and teachers go without to afford that?
So having the correct leadership in our school system is very important. And so we have already taken steps to remedy some of those issues. We no longer have an assistant superintendent. That job was given to someone else who's now the financial director. And so actually, at this time, and one of the other superintendents who's on the payroll, well, actually, that job will be done in June. And then another superintendent is going to a different school system. So actually, at the start of our next school system, we will only have two superintendents. Our superintendent, Connie Franklin, and then we'll also have an assistant superintendent, who now will be John Stith. So that will be the only two superintendents going forward. Far as funds, we've been fortunate to have CARES funding. So I do not feel that any funding was cut out from our teachers and our students. We're in a good place right now financially, but we've got to be careful where we spend those funds because we've got to allocate those funds appropriately. And so to ensure that doesn't happen in the future, you've got to have the right people in place. And I believe that we have the right people in place.
Question five. As staff shortages deepen across the country and workload increases, more educators are feeling burned out and demoralized. I think I skipped a question. I skipped a question. I apologize. We'll continue with this one, and then I'll go back. Research shows that school leaders who protect teachers' time, invite their input, and support their mental health and wellbeing through comprehensive programs see higher levels of satisfaction and retention. What steps do you think are the most important in protecting and honoring our educators?
So our educators are very important. I think we need to focus, as our next steps to focus, I think we need to focus on the retention and retaining our current teachers. We have some amazing teachers. We need to be focused on recruiting more staff and teachers. So those teachers need to feel appreciated. So we need to take steps in honoring them with pay raises. We need to take steps in offering more paid days off, and we need to show our appreciation to our teachers.
That was question five. I skipped number four, so let's do number four. The pandemic forced many Stevens County teachers to become online educators. How are we preparing our teachers to be both successful and satisfied in their jobs in light of these new requirements?
So during the pandemic, we were focused on keeping our schools open. That was important to me. As a medical provider in our community, I was fortunate to be able to guide our schools through a pandemic. But we also wanted people that do not feel safe in our schools to stay enrolled, and we did offer online education. So some of the teachers did end up pulling double duty. But one of the things we're focused on now is a lot of our students got left behind during the pandemic. So we need to be focused now on how do we correct learning loss for those students. And so focusing more on the technology needed, and we've got to catch these students up and focus on learning loss from the pandemic.
Final question. Recent graduates of our school system and many others have openly stated that they felt underprepared for the real world due to a lack of skills preparation. Specifically, no training in banking such as mortgages or loans, insurance, writing checks, public speaking, mental health management, soft skills, or how to apply for a loan or file their own taxes. As the authority that approves curriculum for the county, what would your answer be to this problem?
That's a good question. We definitely need to be teaching these skills to our students, our students that do not have those skills. One of the things going forward in the school system, and we will be having a new curriculum coordinator, and my hope is that curriculum coordinator will focus on these skills. We have a CTA program at the high school in that building that is amazing. If you haven't seen that facility, you need to see it. It's probably the envy of any school in the state. And that's a program that teaches these trade skills. And these students need to be learning about finances, how to write checks. They need to be learning trades to be successful. And we need to have classes about life learning. It's not just about higher education. It's about succeeding at life and producing students that will be valuable to our employers in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbs. You're all finished.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Approaching the podium next is Republican challenger Kendrick Maxwell. Welcome, Mr. Maxwell. You have one moment or one minute to introduce the crowd. Introduce yourself.
Hey, good afternoon. My name's Kendrick Maxwell. I'm a resident of Stevens County, graduated from Stevens County, was a recipient of a four-year scholarship to Georgia Southern after playing high school football at Stevens County. I have two boys, Kayden, who graduated from Stevens County. I have a ninth grader that is currently at the high school. So, you know, the board, it's one of those positions in the county that runs deep. You know, you look at where we were at, a system of excellence years ago, we're in a great position now to get back there. You want to build upon that with the board that's there. There was an open position. I says, hey, why not throw my name in the hat? You know, I feel like I have a lot to offer. I love this community. Currently, I'm on the SGT at the high school with the school governance. I do a lot of volunteering for the athletics. So that's one of the core reasons that I want to be a part.
Question number one. Are you related by birth or marriage to anyone in an elected or government position? And if so, who?
No.
Question two. What is your position concerning the critical race theory in our schools and the teaching of transgender sex to our children?
Yeah, a lot of that's case-by-case basis. You know, we want to make sure that every individual has the right to a fair and great education. So you don't want to deny anybody anything, but at the same time, you don't want the disruption. So there's got to be some things put in place, whether it be system-wide, statewide, or work with another district to accommodate those students. But personally, that's got to be looked upon on a base, a case-by-case basis.
Question three. In this fiscal year, we have paid three superintendents at one time for four months and two superintendents for at least nine months. If elected, what steps will you take to ensure we never do that again? And what part of the budget was utilized? And what services did our students and teachers go without to afford that?
Well, the first part is, you know, any hire is 50/50. I mean, if you're in a leadership role and you do hiring, any hires are 50/50. Was the due diligence done? I don't know. I wasn't there. But for the term of the first superintendent that was replaced, there was something there that the board didn't like. So you go in and you make another hire. Secondly, you know, with that hire, you bring in Dorsey, you bring in the interim, you got to pay him. You still got a contract on the other. So you have to look at it as a whole. A hire is 50/50. Do we need to do our due diligence to find good candidates? Yes. From my knowledge, nothing went lacking during that process of paying those superintendents. Because if you know, we got a reserve that's built up over the last eight years with the first superintendent that came in when we had to close the other schools.
Question four. The pandemic forced many Stevens County teachers to become online educators. How are we preparing our teachers to be both successful and satisfied in their jobs in light of these new requirements?
Well, personally, being on the SGT at the high school, the districts have spent a lot of money on tablets. They made the purchases. So every student in our system has a computer to work with. So that gave the teachers that leverage there. When you talk to some teachers, you know, it was tough. It was challenging teaching those online and those that came back to school once the doors were opened back up. But at the end of the day, they've done a great job. We give them the resources now. And I think overall, I know the high school speaking specifically has done a lot with technology, you know, being able to do things on what they call a smart board. And they see that on the tablet if they're working virtual from home. So it allows a teacher to teach that subject or that topic one time.
Question five. As staff shortages deepen across the country and workload increases, more educators are feeling burned out and demoralized. Research shows that school leaders who protect teachers' time, invite their input, and support their mental health and wellbeing through comprehensive programs see higher levels of satisfaction and retention. What steps do you think are the most important in protecting and honoring our educators?
Well, any school system, you got to have a support system. And we can go hire the best teachers across the state. But if we don't have a support system, and that means administrators are going to stand behind them, that means the paraprofessionals that are there assisting with those students. It goes as far as the custodians, you know, during their part. It goes as far as the lunchroom staff during their part, and then the bus drivers. When you have that support staff, the teachers can go in and teach. They don't have to worry about the other little things that's taking place within the school and within their classroom. So you give them the support staff. You give them everything they need to be successful. And you've done your due diligence in hiring a great teacher. They'll be successful.
Last question. Recent graduates of our school system and many others have openly stated that they felt underprepared for the real world due to a lack of skills preparation. Specifically, no training in banking such as mortgages or loans, insurance, writing checks, public speaking, mental health management, soft skills, how to apply for a loan, or how to file their own taxes. As the authority that approves curriculum for the county, what would your answer to this problem be?
Well, I know currently there is a curriculum at the high school that covers this because my son just had it the first nine weeks of school. I want to say, I think last year, Ms. Stacy Hempel taught that course. So there are some things out there, you know, in the high school, the school system offers a lot, whether it's what you're wanting to study or learn, you know. Sometimes you have to take a little bit over here, take a little bit from the middle, take a little bit to the right or the left to put that together to get what you need. So, you know, the banking, I mean, could there have been something added? I'm sure there could have been at the end of the day. But I do know now there is a class offered at the high school that goes through checking accounts, writing resumes, filling out job applications. So, you know, that's there now.
Thank you. You're all finished. That was Kendrick Maxwell, Republican. Approaching the stage next is another Republican, Kayla Caldwell-Smith. So I've read these questions over and over. Do you have them memorized yet? I think I do, but just as sure as I think I do, I'll get them mixed up. So I'm going to continue reading them verbatim. Welcome, Ms. Smith. You're going to have one minute to address in your introductory remarks.
Are people sitting down or standing?
It's your choice. Make yourself comfortable.
Hey, everyone. I'm Kayla Smith. I'm 39 years old. And can you guys hear me? I'm 39 years old. I have two kids in... Okay, now can you hear me? Okay, so I'm 39 years old, and I have two kids in Stevens County schools. I have a fifth grader and a second grader. I've been involved with PTO at Liberty for two years and at Toccoa for two years. We were able to, at Liberty, we were able to finish raising funds to put in playground equipment. That was like $24,000. These past two years, I've been on the governance team at Liberty. So I've got to sit in on two principal interviews. So I've got to see the inside of like how the governance... I'm sorry, I was nervous. So I've got to see the insides of how the schools operate with like the governance and the fundings and stuff like that that they get from charter monies and all. I'm the type of person that will, anytime I've been asked to step up, I step up and I help out.
You're doing fine.
I can't breathe.
Okay, question number one.
Oh, God.
This is an easy one. Are you related by birth or marriage to anyone in an elected or government position? And if so, who?
No.
See, it's easy.
Are they all like that? Oh, no.
Question two. What is your position concerning the critical race theory in our schools and the teaching of transgender sex to our children?
That's not the school's place. Actually, Georgia was the first state that the school, the Georgia Board of Education passed, they banned it from the school last year. So that's already in place. But no, it's not the school's responsibility to be teaching that to the children. It's the parents' responsibility if they want to go over any of those kind of issues with their children. It's not the school.
Question three. In this fiscal year, we've paid three superintendents at one time for four months and two superintendents for at least nine months. If elected, what steps will you take to ensure we never do that again? And what part of the budget was utilized? And what services did our students and teachers go without to afford that?
Wow, that's a lot. Okay, so first of all, I think there should be a, from what I understand, there is a no-fault clause in the contract of a superintendent. So if a superintendent does something that they're not supposed to, then like if it's morally or ethically, I think they should be able to be fired regardless of the no at fault. Because I mean, if you're at fault for something that's moral or ethically wrong, do you want that person there? Do you want to keep paying them? And I think they should have utilized, you had a deputy superintendent that they used for a week, and then they brought Odom back in. I mean, excuse me, not Odom, but they brought Dorsey back in. So you had those three. And then, I mean, you're just wasting money. Why would you bring somebody back in that you already had a deputy superintendent? I mean, what's the purpose of a deputy superintendent if they're not going to be able to help out?
Question four. The pandemic forced many Stevens County teachers to become online educators. How are we preparing our teachers to be both successful and satisfied in their jobs in light of these new requirements?
Well, for the teachers, I mean, for the children, it was hard for them being online. So I can imagine the struggle that the teachers had trying to keep up because you've got kids that have fell behind. And, you know, you've got some that are on top of it. So the teachers faced a lot of struggle in trying to make sure that their children were getting the education that they needed. So, I mean, the best thing is in school, I mean, in school teaching all the way around. I mean, you know, for the kids that want to do virtual learning, I think that's one thing. But I don't think that that should be something that, you know, unfortunately, the COVID brought all this along. And you can see big, like in our test scores and stuff where the kids have fell behind. The state did not lower their mandates in like the testing. So they're still holding them up to this level. But that was pre-COVID. And with COVID, it changed everything. So, I mean, the teachers have been through a lot, as well as the students as well.
Last question.
I was like, are we done?
Last question. Recent graduates of our school system and many others have openly stated that they felt underprepared for the real world due to a lack of skills preparation. Specifically, no training in banking such as mortgages or loans, insurance, writing checks, public speaking, mental health management, soft skills, how to apply for a loan, or how to file their own taxes. As the authority that approves curriculum for the county, what would your answer to this problem be?
Well, okay, so I'm a big supporter of our CTAE programs. And, you know, when I was in high school, we had, it was called youth apprenticeship, and it was led by Ms. Grace Duval. And she helped put the kids that wanted to go in a specific career into that career. So I was able to get my foot in at Patterson Pump. And this year, I'll be there for 21 years, and I'm 39 years old. So by having those type of programs, and I think if you can add more stuff into these programs, you know, like the soft skills, doing a checkbook, doing taxes, I remember when we... doing a checkbook, doing taxes. I remember when we were in high school, we had a class on doing taxes and we actually got to help some of the teachers fill out their taxes and stuff. So I feel like the stuff that was there years ago is not there now. Didn't we? I'm not lying. I am not lying. Shoot me if I am lying. But we did. They would bring in their forms and we would help them out. So...
Did that include audit protection too?
I will plead the fifth on that. But yeah, I mean, I would like to see them being able to be taught more soft skills and at a younger age too.
Gotcha. We intruded on your time a little bit. That's okay. You survived.
I did what?
You're all finished.
All right.
You're all done.
Vote for me!
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We have one final challenger for District Two, Post Two. Democrat Chantel Grant. She'll be making her way to the stage and you get to hear these questions one more time. Then we get a new set to listen to. Ms. Grant, you'll have one minute to address our group with your introductory remarks.
Good evening. I am Chantel Grant. I am a mom. I have one son and I am the nana of two grandsons. I was born and raised right here in Toccoa, Stevens County. I attend the Mount Zion Baptist Church where the Reverend Charles White is my pastor. I am the Regional Children's and Young Adult Services Director at the Toccoa Stevens County Public Library, where I've been employed for 15 years. Planning and implementing programs is what I do best. Children are my passion. Students and families first. Building hope, building futures for our tomorrow leaders together. So do not let this opportunity pass you by as you vote for Grant all the way. See you at the polls.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. We're going to jump into question number one. Are you related by birth or marriage to anyone in an elected or government position? And if so, who?
I am not.
Question two. What is your position concerning the critical race theory in our schools and the teaching of transgender sex to our children?
I think it divides us and we need to come together as one. We need to focus on success and not division. And I have forgotten the second part.
I said I wasn't going to repeat the question.
Yes, you did. Next.
Question three. In this fiscal year, we have paid three superintendents at one time for four months and two superintendents for at least nine months. If elected, what steps will you take to ensure we never do that again? And what part of the budget was utilized and what services did our students and teachers go without to afford that?
Well, we need to listen and we need to review all information put in front of us. And we need to think about it very carefully, considering the students first and families second. And teachers pay and probably supplies, like in building our new ag center. Yeah. That's it.
Question four. The pandemic forced many Stevens County teachers to become online educators. How are we preparing our teachers to be both successful and satisfied in their jobs in light of these new requirements?
Making sure that they have everything that they need, all the equipments and the equipment actively working for the success of them being able to log on and teach the students virtually. Having technical assistance on hand at all times, just in case if there's any problems. And being in constant communication with them to see how comfortable they are in teaching virtually.
Question five. You're almost finished. As staff shortages deepen across the country and workload increases, more educators are feeling burned out and demoralized. Research shows that school leaders who protect teachers' time, invite their input, and support their mental health and wellbeing through comprehensive programs see higher levels of satisfaction and retention. What steps do you think are the most important in protecting and honoring our educators?
Being in constant communication with our educational staff and making sure that they have everything that they need, in my opinion, is the best way to satisfy that.
Last question. Recent graduates of our school system and many others have openly stated that they felt underprepared for the real world due to a lack of skills preparation. Specifically, no training in banking such as mortgages or loans, insurance, writing checks, public speaking, mental health management, soft, excuse me, soft skills, how to apply for a loan, or how to file their own taxes. As the authority that approves curriculum for the county, what would your answer to this problem be?
We have to seek and use our resources in our town. If it's not being done in our school system, then we should reach out to others in the community, such as your librarians. We have time to plan and implement programs to teach these soft skills and these life skills. Because as a librarian, I am looking forward to assisting our school system in any way that I can in helping implement and making sure our students have all of those skills before they graduate successfully.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
You're all finished. I'd like to say thank you to each of our candidates for the positions on our Board of Education. That concludes the Board of Education portion of our Town Hall meeting.